I'm excited. Okay. Any other questions? Very good. All right, we're off and running. And, uh, okay, one last thing on the roads. Let me give you this before we move into the next item. This is a financial update where we're at financially on the road. So, uh, today we made our first progress payment to Edbell for three hundred ten thousand, two hundred two dollars, so that was payment number one. So right now, we've got three point eight million in the road fund. Our current estimated payables is four point two. So we've got a current gap of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. But the road project ended today, and if Fugro did the testing like they say they are, and if Kimley Horn billed us the full two hundred thousand, the roads ended today, we have to come up with a check of four hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars. That's the gap right now, cash gap. Okay? Now, between now and the end, the possibilities are we have one more change to come, which is the dirt change, which they think it's thirty thousand, our Gers think it's a hundred thousand, so I don't know what the number's gonna be. And we're gonna get a little bit more money in interest, because the tax pool account is down about a half a percent, so we're getting one point oh two. We're actually getting about two thousand dollars more a month than if we would've left it in tax pool. So, we're getting, as you can see up there, we got, uh, where was it? Oh, the interest, yeah, so almost thirty-six hundred dollars in interest. So, we're gonna get a little bit of money there. So right now, that four twenty-five is our current deficit, the way things are now. But it should be lower. Hopefully, because we're doing the maturity meters, Fugro will not have to do so many cylinders. So who knows? We might save ten thousand back. Kimley Horn is a do not exceed number. But long as we don't call them out here, then they're billing us by the hour. We just got a bill today for eleven thousand, I think eleven thousand from Kimley Horn. So, right now, we're into, yeah, so we're, we're, we're working on that. So there's, there's a positive potential upside there when we get to the end. Uh, but, but that's where we're at. So when we do the budget, this number's gonna come back. Any questions, just kind of on where we're at here? Okay. So, all right, it's very good. This is, this is where we're at. So now, I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is the budget. So, first thing on the budget debt is a real high-level look. This is, this is a very high-level look on the budget, and then we'll wind it up. So if you look at the right-hand box, on the right-hand box, it says, what's our cash on hand? There's not much money we have sitting here today. So, we've got, um, we've got thirty thousand in our regular fund. We got another building permit yesterday, so we're doing well there. Um, the tax account, we still owe about seven thousand, the delinquent in tax that haven't paid us yet. Uh, and our general fund reserves got five eighteen, and then we still have some money in tax pool. I left the accounts open, and you can see I left about five percent of our money over there in tax pool, just to keep it alive. So right now, as we sit here today, there's about five hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars in our general fund. I think we're gonna end up close to that at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year. We've got three more months to go. And we've got three more months to go of sales tax coming in, we've got at least one more building permit, if not two, and we still have the admin fees, about twenty-five thousand dollars from the utility fund. So I think we're gonna end up pretty close to this. We've already paid the fire NMS for the year, we paid it for the whole year. So we really don't have any big expenses still to come. Okay? So if we have this at the end of the year, at the end of September, then let's assume that that four hundred and twenty-five thousand, remember that gap? Let's just assume that if we get that down to three seventy-five, let's assume that we can make fifty thousand headway on that. Again, I'm being conservative. So that means roughly then, we would start the year with about two hundred thousand. If we committed then, three hundred seventy-five thousand, that's committed, that's out the door. So that's what we have to start the year, that's our buffer. So that's fine. That's our buffer. Now, the reason why the buffer's important is because, it's funny, so we used to have a, a former mayor, years ago, when I first got here, used to do the budget. And when they did the budget, I remember, he'd say like, you know, we budgeted fifty thousand for roads last year, and we didn't do them. So I'm gonna spend that fifty thousand this year, and add it to the fifty, and then it's twenty thousand dollars back. According to the budget, you had fifty thousand the last year you could spend. And then the other thing they would do is, they would say, okay, in the budget, let's assume we're gonna get a hundred thousand dollars in building permits. A hundred thousand, we assumed thirty. Now, it's about spending. That hasn't happened yet. So they would then start spending money upfront, because the budget said that they could go out and now buy new equipment and buy stuff, because they were getting a hundred thousand dollars in building permits. That's why the account was bankrupt, because they had no idea of cash flow. They, they, they were clueless. So, the reason why we have to have the buffer is because the in and the out happen at different times. We're gonna get fifty thousand dollars in sales tax, but it happens each month. We don't get it at the end. But our bond payment is front-loaded. Bond payment happens in February. So the buffer is there because of all the timing differences, as to when we, TML makes us pay our, our six thousand, seven thousand dollar insurance in October, in the first month of the year, we gotta pay the full insurance bill. Okay? So, that's why the buffer, that's why we watch that buffer, that what, what Wayne will call the fund balance. That's why that's like the lifeblood of us. So, I want that number to be going up, because we don't know, at the end of the day, three months from now, the road guys could come in, or at four months from now, and say, Mark, we're putting in a pipe and it won't work. There's gotta be a change order. And the old pipe is gone, we gotta do something different, it's gonna cost twenty thousand dollars extra. We don't know. We're one half-street into, to the project. We don't know if there's anything net, we hope not. There shouldn't be, but we don't know. And if there is an error down the road, we have to eat it. Even if it's an engineering error, we have to eat it anyway, that's part of the contract. So, again, we, 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 we just wanna make sure we've got a good buffer. Gotta make, that buffer's there to absorb it. So if you look then at, kind of to the left there, proposed budget, and we'll get to these numbers in a second. If we assume, last year, our appraised value was a hundred and eight million. And as of two weeks ago, for the city, we were at a hundred and eleven point five. We were up to a hundred and eleven point five. But, up that hundred and eleven point five, thirty-five million of it was under appeal. It's not gonna go up. It's only gonna decrease. So, of the hundred and eleven point five, two million of that was new, brand-new stuff. So, you can basically see, it's almost flat. But if you win your appeal, so what I did is, I said, let's just assume, we'll, we'll get the updates, let's assume we end up at a hundred and ten million. So I use a hundred and ten million as the, as the value point. So our twenty-five cents and a hundred and ten million will generate two seventy-five. Other revenues is in the budget, that's the franchise fees and sales tax and all the other stuff. Itemized over here. But that's about a hundred and twenty-four. The cost to run the city's about two twelve. So, we should have, a, a net income from the city about a hundred and eighty-seven. That's right about, we're aboard about a hundred and ninety-something this year. So that's our profit, our surplus, if everything goes according to plan. Now, you take that, and then there is the admin fee. So that comes from Rocky Point and from the utility fund. That's the money they give the city for services. So that's another fifty-four. So that means, we've got two hundred forty-one thousand sitting there that we can use for debt. We don't have to have the taxes for, we can use that, in theory, to pay anything we want. So the first bond is a hundred eighty thousand. What we have done is, we have adopted last year sixteen and a half cents. That paid off that bond in full. So that's, that's where that sixteen and a half cents comes from. And that would make a hundred eighty-one five. Now, for twenty-twenty, our new bond payment is a ni, an extra two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. What other cities would do is, they would then raise the debt servicing by like twenty cents to pay for that. What I did is, I said, well, let's only raise it three and a half cents, not a nickel. And before, we did a nickel. If we just raised it three and a half, that'll generate thirty-eight thousand. But we need two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We're a hundred and ninety thousand short on our bond payment. But, we've got two hundred forty-one thousand theoretically to the good, so we should be okay. We'll use our surplus to keep the tax as low as possible. And if it goes according to plan, we'll actually have, we'll add fifty thousand in our cash balance, if everything works our way. So, so I think that's what we wanna do, is, is that, let's try and get there. Now, if we didn't have to make that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar mystery payment, that we don't know what it is yet, we don't know if there's any future increases, then we could probably get by with just the sixteen and a half cents. Wouldn't have to raise it at all. But this year, we got a double whammy, right? We got a big makeup payment and the new bond payment. So I think for this one year, we set, we set the debt servicing at twenty cents, and then next year, we'll rethink it. We might put it a little back down to fifteen. It'll be a discussion next year, but certainly won't go any higher. As you can see, we can make that bond payment, and if we would've had our normal appreciation is about six percent, plus another two percent, so we would normally have gotten about another twenty thousand in property taxes. Just our regular increase would've been about another twenty thousand to the top line. But it's flat instead of up. And then the debt servicing would've been up by like another fifteen thousand. So if we would've had a normal decap year, we'd have another thirty-five thousand in this, in this puzzle. So you can see, we'd be in pretty good shape to make the bond payment without having to jack with the tax rate. But it didn't happen. So, everything's flat this year, and we got the double hit. But you can see, we can get there from here. We can get there not having to raise the tax rate going forward. All right? But if, if, if bad news happens, and this starts going negative, then that was the deal that we had five years ago. If the cash starts going down instead of up, then we gotta, we gotta do what we gotta do. Now, the other thing that's not part of this is the utility fund. Utility fund is always in the background. If you ever had a disaster, the utility fund money is always available. So, keep that in your back. But, okay, so this is kind of the, this is the, the big picture. Now here is the, and we're not voting anything about it, this is just, this is just walking it through, everybody then can take it home, you know, take a look at it, and, uh, you know, come back next with questions, and, you know, if you need clarification, in what case, no. This is, so what this represents here is, uh, just a first, so this is a first cut at the budget. Uh, so typically what I like to do when I'm looking at like revenues, is when revenues march up, like franchise fees or something, it's really easy to take the last number, and just assume, hey, that twenty percent increase is permanent. But it seems in a lot of our stuff, there's, there's kind of a mean regression, right? We give a little bit back the next year. So, I try to be very conservative here, so that the, the news we're gonna get would be good news. So for instance, the sales taxes, we're at thirty-six thousand. So we made last month, our, last month in our sales tax, the city took in forty-seven hundred dollars last month. Okay? The MDD took in twenty-six, we had almost seventy-five hundred dollars last month in sales tax. We're gonna set an all-time city record, we're gonna be around seventy-five thousand for the year. We're gonna annihilate our previous record. So, we're thirty-six now, we're easily gonna hit probably fifty in the city. But I said it at forty. We can always adjust it, let, because with the virus, worrying online, or I, you know, I, you know, it, it, we can always change it later, but for now, I'm gonna be conservative.
How about stopping? It's not gonna be seen anyway, generally.
Yeah, you know, we had, we had, you know, we had nine houses under construction at one point live, we have seven more to came online. So, we're having organic growth as well. So if you wanna change that number, we can. But let me say something. So what in the past used to happen, not to us, but in, is everybody looked for a reason to go high. So if we were at fifty thousand, then you went fifty-two thousand next year. You, you took all the revenue, you jacked them all up, because that gave you more money to spend.
Has to be a reason for it. Yeah, that's the logic, has to be actual.
But the logic was, well, we had fifty last year, so let's do fifty-five.
I don't know that how to work.
Well, I, but you guys understand, so I tend to go the other way. I tend to always undershoot it. It's, it's almost like I need to see an increase for three years in a row before I actually admit, okay, it's now a permanent increase, it's not a transitory thing. But, uh, so, we got the sales taxes there, licensing permits deals with, deals with the, uh, building permits. Because you see, right now, we're at forty-seven thousand. So we're, we're over, we budgeted forty thousand. So we typically budget thirty thousand dollars a year for new houses, because it's a correction. Thirty thousand is like four houses for us. Well, we're gonna be way over this year. We were way over last year. But who knows? The year when I budgeted for fifty thousand, we might only have one house. We got here where there were no houses, single, you got zero.
So, so this is solely based on new houses? So I may have a few other.
No, so, this, this top page, this is the aggregate. It is, you know, the, the, the ma, the micro details on the next page.
The permits could be a water here, could be coming next year.
So the forty that includes, yeah, it's, you know.
Why do we cut places in the permits back?
Why do we what?
Cut it back, that's it. So you can't actually charge for life, so you can.
I don't understand what you mean.
Yeah, but like, like, that was in eighteen actual, right? We were at forty-two thousand.
Right.
That was in nineteen, we were at fifty thousand. Twenty, twenty, or, this year, we're at forty-seven. Why do we budget only thirty-nine and not more? So, making one, housing starts are down. Just wanna say we're gonna get more housing starts here. Like, what I look at per year. I didn't know what that is.
No, so the idea is this here, I mean, so the issue is this, we get, let's say, eighty-nine thousand in flatwork and fences, or, you know, electrical, hot water heaters, and the usual random assortment. We get eighty-nine thousand, and then we get new houses. So we just got a new house permitted, we got a new house going in, uh, over here, off the peninsula, and they paid us nine thousand five hundred dollars. How many of those are we gonna get? I mean, I, I think we've got a twelve thousand dollar permit coming in on Carrick. It's kinda like feast or famine. We, we don't have three thousand dollar, they're, they're massive houses. So where, where these numbers are high in the previous years, like, we're at forty-seven now, if that Carrick house comes in, it's over twelve thousand, we'll be at sixty thousand. You know, that's because we had three massive, so I don't know what to do. Again, in the old days, I'm a little gun-shy, in the old days, they just put a hundred thousand dollars on that line.
We're not, we don't have the housing starts right now.
So, we're looking like three or four, I've seen plans right now for three more houses. I've seen the plans. I am confident they're coming in. But, you know, who predicted four houses on green metal in a year? From zero to four, right? So, it's conservative. Now, the good news about housing with this is, let's say that thirty-nine thousand is too high. Okay? Let's say that we overshot, but then we don't pay the building inspectors, so the expenses go down. So it self-corrects. It, it's not like we're spending that money to buy playground equipment. We're using that money to pay the building inspector predominantly. So, right, so it makes a little bit of sense that, therefore high, then he's high.
There's not really profit in that number, it's covering all the fees.
There's a little bit of, of makeup of some of the overhead, but basically, it's, it's, it's meant to be, to fluctuate together. But, yeah, I'm open with changing, if you looked at the micro numbers, you wanna give it another shot, I got no problem with that. Uh, the, uh, the, the, the fees and certain, that's the same old stuff. Those, those numbers aren't gonna be big to change things. General government is, um, you know, I, again, you know, I just went through everything there, it ended up being a hundred and fifty, I tried to make it up around. So the current year-to-date on our general government is a hundred and thirty-nine, right? Which looks a little high, because we still have three months to go. Reason why that's high is we spent eleven thousand dollars buying a new mower, a new lawn equipment that got stolen.
We can reimburse for that.
Linda, where are we on TML insurance?
I, honestly, I'm expecting a check any time now. I've sent off all of the invoices, we've processed back and forth, she cleared everything as far as I know.
They pay it, are they paying it all?
No, they're, we have deductible.
We have a deductible, and we actually have a deductible twice, we have different teams that are.
It's total, two, two nights.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a deductible. She's lying, and she's, uh. And it's the most ridiculous thing you have to do.
No, no, we made a mistake, it was all.
So how much, uh, how much did you say, Dr. Vina, yes? Eight, nine, seven?
I'm expecting somewhere between, I, I, I'm guessing maybe nine.
Good luck.
Now, fifteen.
So one of the.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
So let me, let me use this as a, a, a teaching point for a second. So we spent eleven thousand dollars on that line right there, so part of the line that feeds into that is mower. So we spent eleven thousand dollars, we had mower and weed whacker and all the stuff. We're gonna get reimbursed for that. Ten thousand, that we're gonna get reimbursed for. So, one accounting technique is, you take the eleven thousand and you hit the ten against it, because we're only out one thousand, right? So the reimbursement is a negative on that line. It's like, you know, I went shopping for you, you gave me the money, well, I didn't spend it then. Auditor won't let us do that. Auditor says, no, I want you to record the eleven thousand as an expense, and then down under miscellaneous revenues, put the ten thousand down there and count it as revenues. So, it's a wash in the big picture, but it makes us look like we're over budget, when we're not. We got reimbursed for that.
Why does he want?
It didn't happen last year, too, something.
It happens each year.
It happens every year, it's just a different line.
But this is where, you know, we got into trouble with certain people, they're looking at, micro-analyzing individual lines, and it's like, you, you can't do that, because we're not gonna do a budget amendment. When that line at the end of the year ends up being a hundred and sixty-two thousand, we're not over budget. We got reimbursed for ten of that. So, this is just a disconnect between the accountants and what the auditor wants, and the auditor gets what he wants. So, but that's not the way I would do it. So, that, that's just the one line. That, that, that's initiative, but everything else looks pretty good. I mean, everything else is just tracking along, uh, Public Works is a little high, but as I explained, four, that, I believe, is related to some of the road stuff. You know, I think that's the, the city hall parking lot, just trying to keep the parking lot open, and, you know, it's just road-related stuff. All right, so.
What about the interest revenue?
Interest revenue.
Looks like you kept it about the same from, or it is the same.
Yeah, I mean, we, well.
So, now we're hearing more interest coming in right now.
From the bond money? We, we, so this is, this is a tricky, good point. So let me, let me think this through. Okay, let's.
On, on, on the budget.
That money, so we got three thousand five hundred dollars, or three thousand seven hundred dollars or something, last month, from the bond money. Technically, that's city money. But we're gonna use that to make the road payment. That's lowering that three hundred down to three seventy-five. It's, it's kinda accounted for in the bucket later. It's committed over there.
So it's not a missing interest.
So we don't wanna use that over here to buy playground equipment, or pay land a salary, or, right? So, it's, it's kinda folded in. That's why down low, when it says, capital outlay expenditure, three seventy-five, that's, so what I want the interest there is the interest from our reserves and our money, and we're, we're doing really well on it right now, but obviously, that's gonna go down. At some point, we gotta, we gotta pay the piper, so, you know, I, so it's complicated. I just love the same number. I didn't wanna do a lot of analysis.
Yeah, you just manage the roads as its own separate project outside of the general fund.
Exactly, exactly right.
Sometimes known as below the line.
So the roads are not shown on here, other than, we have to plan for that, we, we do have to write that three hundred seventy-five thousand dollar check. Uh, so you can see, we've got, um, the city operating surplus, one eighty-seven, so you can see that's pretty good. Right now, we're at one ninety-three for the town. We're having a record year. I think we'll end up around that number at the end of the year, if not over, if not two hundred. So we're doing great as, as, as the city goes. Great year. So, the deficit then, because we have to pay that money, you add in the admin fee, we gotta spend, gotta take a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars out to make the bond payment, that's from down below. See, down below, there's our bond payments, and then that's the money it's gonna take to make that be a zero. So at the end of the day, according to this budget, we're gonna send out three hundred sixteen grand is gonna leave the building. Well, we should be at five eighty or so when we start the year. Right? So we should be okay, we should be in really good shape.
Deficit's been, I wish we don't have shown here as a reserve.
Right, now, there's a couple things to the good. So for instance, if you, I'm not gonna go through these, but if you, if you go to the second page, under, uh, so under, sorry, the third page, under the expenses. So under the expenses, one of the lines is, um, town maintenance. It's down about, three-quarters of the way down the page. See, everybody see town maintenance? It was seven thousand dollars, we've spent about three thousand on that now. What that is, that's things like the pest control for the building, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's not the, it's not the, the internet thing, but it's basically maintenance around this building. Well, one of the things it includes is, for instance, Christmas lights. Well, we're trying to offload these things to the MDD, like the events and stuff. So why can't the MDD do that? So part of what I have not done is, is gone through this to say, so right now, the MDD, the Rocky Point Fund today, and you'll get their budget next, next meeting, so as we sit here today, the Rocky Point Water Fund has got a twenty thousand dollar capital reserve, the water fund. Right now, they're, 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 and they're gonna be higher than that. They've got a repair right now, they're replacing a pump, it's gonna cost them two thousand dollars. They're replacing one of my pumps. To replace one of the main pumps, two thousand, they had twenty thousand reserve. The F D D separately, has got just under thirty thousand in it. Now, I've asked them to make our next bond payment. We have a, a, a seven thousand dollar bond payment, for interest only, on the old bonds, that's due in August, Linda?
Yeah, five, six.
It's due in August. I've asked them to make that payment for us. So that'll, right now, we have about eight thousand dollars in our, in our, uh, debt servicing. We've got the money sitting there for debt servicing, but if they pay it, then we just keep that money. And we'll, we'll use that money next year to lower what we have to transfer in. You know what I'm saying? So, the F D D right now has got just under thirty, they've just got twenty-six hundred dollars last month in sales tax. We've got three more months to go before the end of the year. They'll, they'll end the year at around thirty, the end of the year, and then they're gonna make another thirty next year in sales tax. And the water system makes another ten. So they're gonna have forty thousand inbound, and they're gonna end, or they're gonna start with thirty to begin with. There's seventy thousand dollar nuts sitting there that we need to utilize. 'Cause that'll help us get through this next year, and then we don't have to raise the tax rate. You know what I'm saying? So, we haven't, I haven't gone through yet to strategically figure out where we see some advantages, but we need to use, it, it's stupid for the F D D, it's not efficient for, for us to be raising the taxes while our, our, our umbrella organization, our subsidiary, is hoarding cash, we're raising taxes on our citizens. So, it, it's a good problem to have. So, these numbers may change next month, I'll do some rea, I may come in and say, "Look, I think we can lower this number or that number, or do a few things." Or just flat out tell the F D D, "We want you to contribute twenty thousand dollars toward the bond payment." Right at the beginning of the year, "Give us twenty thousand dollars right now, you're gonna contribute..." Because remember, the roads are in the district. Roads are part of the F D D, you're allowed to use F D D money on roads. So, that's another option. So if we have to give us a lump sum, then we don't need to transfer in, you know, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand anymore. You know what I'm saying? So, we, we can, we can talk about some of that. Look through it, if there's numbers you want to change, absolutely no problem, we'll come in, we'll kinda go through it. If you're, if you need clarification, just send me an email, if you wonder like, "Why is some number, like, why is the year-to-date number high or low?" It's probably, you know, there's something, we're replacing air conditioners in the building, there's some reason why we're a-wack, but, uh... I mean, look, with City Hall being closed, our electric bills are lower...